Good evening and welcome to the Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, June 3rd. Call a meeting to order at 7:01. Please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Looks a little thin up here tonight. Councilmember Schultz is out of town and if you didn't know, Councilmember Millard had to step down because he moved out of his ward boundaries. So you get the three of us. That's the best you're gonna get today, right?
A lot of motions and seconds.
That's right. Yeah, exactly. Just nodding back and forth.
No rezonings.
That's right. Yeah, no rezonings. With that, Jeff, we call roll, please.
Councilmember Schultz is absent. Councilmember Bowe?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Mayor Winchell?
Here. With that, we'll move into adopting the agenda. Matt, I know we got some corrections.
Two things. First of all, we do have the amended agenda that shows number nine. We do need to appoint the acting mayor for the remainder of this calendar year. And the second item is an add. We can put it on as item number eight A. This is the Carver County Minnesota River Bluff Trail. It's a permission for them to go over our property.
Okay. So with that, I would look for a motion to approve the adopted agenda with the addition of eight A.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rowe to adopt the agenda with the corrections. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moves us into visitor presentation. Is there anyone here under visitor presentation? Seeing none, we'll move on to approving the minutes of the May 20th meeting. Are there any corrections or additions? If not, then entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Rowe?
No, I think I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowe. Row Bowe. Row Bowe. I always say it like that. So we have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the May 20th meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moves us into consent agenda item. Corrections or additions? If not, then entertain a motion.
Question, item number B. Is that just a renewal of license from previous year? Is that right?
Actually, I believe that's the first time that they've done it.
Is that a new one?
Yep.
They have one, but I don't think it's never been at River City days.
Yeah, they've never done it at River City.
Because I know they had, in recent years, there have been one. So this is kind of an expansion of what they're doing?
Well, they had pool taps, I believe, at Cuzzi's.
Correct. Yes.
So they're just expanding to Bingo, the way it looks at River City days.
Do you know where they're, I mean, is that, did they put a tent up? Or what is it?
My guess is it's, my guess is it's gonna be in the main tent. Because the daytime activities, they tend to have in there.
Do we generally, you know, because that is at the expense of, do they, you know, having something under there and since it is a, you know, a money-making proposition, do they reimburse, you know, back to River City days or the city? Because doesn't the city pay for the tent?
No, we don't pay for the tent. No, it's River City Days Committee, but they, you know, just like any of the vendors there, they do have a fee that they have to pay to get in.
So their lease tent space or whatever.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And there's really been no other organization that's had Bingo in the past that would be stepping on their toes or anything with?
All right. Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rowe to approve the consent agenda item. Further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moves us into item number eight. Approved lease of St. Francis Regional Medical Center. The use of 8,000 square feet of space at the north side of the Chaska Community Center.
Mayor and councilmembers, the item in front of you tonight.
Easy for you to see?
Yeah, I can't see. Sort of an exciting one, especially as we look at the community center and a lot of the improvements that we're making. You know, other than the community center being built initially, I think the next most exciting is rebuilding it now to keep current into the future. And one of the things that we've been working on, staff's been working on, we have our park and rec staff here, is really working to, this is the last year of our lease with St. Francis for the rehab center addition that's over there. And it's been a great partnership. It expanded into the capable kids partnership in the basement of the community center, which they're actually outgrowing that space now. The physical sports rehab has a desire to stay in the location, but they don't need as much space as they did originally. So the proposal is to move both of those, of those uses into, into the one St. Francis addition that's on the north side of the building, which is about 8,000 square foot. They create their own separate vestibule entrance into that location and then basically have sort of two, one for capable kids, one for, or, one for St. Francis. And they'll be going Mark Wenzel's here and can show you sort of the plans for that. But this, in addition to renewing the lease, St. Francis would also be putting about $600,000 in improvements into the building at the same time, which is great timing because it really means that everything from the basketball courts in north in the building will be remodeled at the same time and be done at the end of the summer. So it's really reinvesting into that entire part of the facility. As we've talked with St. Francis, we're really looking to start the lease where we've left off. So the term of the lease would be starting August 1st of 2013, which is that, that's when we would anticipate the improvements to be completed in the building. It would be a 15-year lease. So they have the desire to stay in the building for, for a long time. That was what their original lease was based on, a 15-year lease, so continuing that. We'd start out with the same rent that's in place for this year now, which is at $147,828, with it going up an average of 3% each year. And you'll see that we've sort of broken that down into three increases in rent. First one goes for the first five years at 147,828. Second five years would go up to 171,384. And the last five years would go up to 211,404. They, St. Francis would be responsible for the costs associated with the remodeling. Again, that's about $600,000 and would be completed this summer. And the city would have the right to approve all changes to the building as part of the remodeling. The other items in the lease would basically stay the same. One thing, just as a note, with capable kids moving from downstairs to upstairs, we have been working with a group to fill that space down in the basement with another use that will be real, I think, a great addition conducive to the rest of the community center. We're not ready at this point to bring that back, but that's something we're in the process of working on now. I'll turn over to these guys to talk a little bit, not only about this and answer some questions, but also give an update on where we're at with the ice project. And then also, we're getting into, you know, getting into some of the details that we've been working with the Hockey Association, the school district, and the figure skating club to start talking about how do we, when we finish the ice rink, especially the main one, how do we decorate it? How do we sort of create that community identity in there as we get that done? So Tom can talk about that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bowe, Councilmember Rowe. Jeff?
Got it easy tonight. There's only two of them, huh?
Just a quick history of the, I'm gonna let Mark go through the project, but we're gonna start with the St. Francis. Just a brief history. In 1989, when we were planning the Chaska Community Center, we built the community center, there was one space downstairs that we didn't have any, any use for. And that space was, was leased by St. Francis. We actually, the park and rec department sent a letter to the two hospitals, Wilconia and Shakopee. And Shakopee happened to be looking for a space, so we put it together in a period of probably six weeks. So that's where St. Francis, Mike Beckman, was originally located. And then I think it was in 1998 when the, when the space was built outside of Arena One. So Mike Beckman and the physical therapy space moved up to that space and the capable kids space was downstairs. I, I should note that Mike Beckman has been with the, the community center since we've been there in 1990. And he's, he's an absolutely wonderful partner in relation to what he does, does for community and, and what we do at the community center as it relates to a healthy community. So it just, it's a good partnership. And I, I'd just like to recognize as we go through this project and the ice arena project and Matt had mentioned the Breakaway Academy, Kathy Skinner and Jason Kirsch and Ron Peiper, who work with the department, they've been putting in a lot of time in relation to those three projects. So there's, there's quite a bit that's been, that's been going on. Just real quickly, on Saturday, some of you might've, might've seen this, but St. Francis Medical Center with Alina, it's called Neighborhood Health Connections, where they, they created, I think it was on the news Saturday night, but over 200,000 bags they put together for food shelves in the metropolitan area. The only reason I mention that, I think that that's an excellent example of what St. Francis Medical Center does in partnership with the city of Chaska to help all residents. And they did that in the parking lot of the 212 Club, or 212 Medical Center. And they gave over 3,000 pounds to the, to the Bountiful Basket Food Show for Chaska. So I think that's certainly noteworthy. With that, I think I'm gonna let Mark talk about the St. Francis and then we can talk a little bit about the ice project.
Good evening. Let's see if I can figure out.
Jason?
There you go.
The magic man in back's got it.
Oh, Jason does his approach and it works.
Touch your nail, right?
Does it scare them?
Okay, got it. Sorry. No rehearsal. I'll just go through this rather quickly, the details of the St. Francis space. So this is space at the end of the ice arena that St. Francis, of course, is currently occupying, but as they reconfigure their business and update their business, and so we're providing capable kids the downstairs operation with the adult upstairs. They opened a new clinic in Savage not too long ago. This will be the same kind of quality level and, and service level of that clinic as they, as, you know, their practice kind of evolves. There will be a new entrance at the end of the building now. This is the current entrance to that facility now. There'll be a new entrance here. And as part of the work you'll see us talk about in the community center in a little bit, we're updating the new, the entrances, the existing entrances now as part of this project. So they'll have a new entrance that will tie again into the rest of the building.
The entrances are gonna resemble more of like down at the lodge. So they have more of an updated look and also maintenance, a lot more maintenance friendly too.
And so there are operations, basically, this is the children's clinic and this is the adult clinic. They each have what they call a gym, which is an open area where they do treatments for patients. They have actually an interesting thing where they have a kitchen food program with the children and activity play structure with the children that they work with, which is a pretty innovative program. But it's a fairly straightforward layout of exam rooms. If you've been in a medical clinic, it kind of lays out the same. They will no longer have the toilet rooms that we had in the back. They've never really been worked, shower toilet rooms have never really worked out that well, so we'll be removing those. Otherwise, they're kind of just updating their space. I can maybe answer questions for you on that, if you have questions about?
One thing to note with that is, this will be a contract that St. Francis actually has to go and do this work. One of the things that's actually not in this lease that we're gonna propose as a, as an additional paragraph in there is the contractor that they have is gonna be building that new vestibule. And so the work that we have with our ice arena vestibule and our city vestibule, as well as some updates in our restroom as part of the ice arena, it makes more sense to have the contractor that's on site to do that. So actually have that as part of their contract and we'll actually reimburse them for that.
Yeah, this is a great advantage to the city economically to have one contractor do all that work. Those same city considerable dollars.
Well, is that same contractor gonna do all the work in there?
They're doing all the work in the St. Francis, not in the ice arena. These are just specific components that, you couldn't have the contractor that's working in the ice rink to it because it's not their specialty.
Right.
And you don't really wanna have a new contractor mobilize because that would be much more expensive. So that's, the economies of scale to have those two happening at once helps save us some dollars too.
So what will happen to the existing entrance? It'll still be there, but it just won't be marked as a, the main entrance for public?
We're gonna take, take off that vestibule and the white tower that's sort of there.
Okay.
We're gonna take that off and it will be, remain as a fire exit from the arena and an exit from St. Francis.
Okay.
And a little bit of, we're gonna rework the parking lot a little bit, entrance ramps and things like that. So the new entrance will stand out as the.
Oh, I was thinking it was gonna be two, just two entrances in. So it's just, it's just one entrance then?
One, one outside door. When you come in, there's two reception rooms, an adult area and a children's area. As they, after you get in the door, they separate them.
I thought we were separating, because I was gonna say I didn't see any separation there. What, help me and maybe anybody watching, what exactly is the capable kids?
They do a lot of the, like if a child is having a tough time crawling, they'll, you know, you can take your kid there and do some physical therapy to help them start crawling. Or if they're having a tough time starting to talk. Or if they're, I only say these because I brought two of my kids in to use these services for crawling and speech therapy and those. It's really sort of developmental type of things where if they're a little bit behind in certain areas, they can go in there and actually get the therapy to bring them back up to where they should be.
Okay. What, is there an age, is there an age where they stop treating there or do they go up to?
Probably 12. I don't, I don't know for sure, but I, I think it's, it's probably, you know, through that elementary age.
All right.
It's very typical though to see smaller kids there. And they actually have a capable kids location here in Chaska, but they also have one in Savage too. So on both sides of the river and both of them are very popular.
Is that covered by insurance with referrals and stuff?
Yeah. Actually, a lot of times it's covered without referrals.
Really? Wow. Okay.
And that's the same thing with the adult physical rehab too, is most of those services are also insurance covered. And, you know, a lot of the stuff that they might do for sports injuries or if you're rehabbing from some type of orthopedic surgery, that ends up being a facility that, and trainers that are able to help people through that. The other part that we're talking about them with is, is how they utilize our pool facilities as part of the, the training there too.
Now that, and this is probably a question for Tom then. So is, in our thing now, you talked a little different, Matt, but in our thing, they didn't talk about breakaway hockey maybe going downstairs? But is that, is that that, that thing where they're sitting there and they go on that?
No. The treadmill?
Yeah.
The treadmill, that's a good question. The treadmill that's in the St. Francis space today, that's been taken down and the mechanical, the mechanical room space that services Arena One today is part, as you remember last fall, we built, we added on to the mechanical room that services Arena Number Two. So that, that new mechanical room is gonna service both arenas. So that means the mechanical room that was serving Arena One is gonna be empty. So we're gonna, that's one of the addendums that Matt has mentioned. So we got a bid on, on putting a hole in the wall for a window and a door. So we're planning or would like to move that treadmill from where it was situated into the mechanical room that used to serve Serena Number One.
Is that a service that the community center offers or is that through, like, I always thought it was through Mike Beckman, but I don't know if it is or isn't.
Ah, no. That space was just leased by St. Francis to Breakaway Hockey.
Okay.
So there's actually two separate businesses. There's Breakaway Hockey, which is separate from Breakaway Academy. The, the two are related, but they're actually two separate businesses.
And the breakaway, breakaway ice or whatever, the first one you mentioned?
Hockey.
Hockey. They've, they've been actually at the community center for almost the entire time.
Almost 20 years.
20 years. So they've been there and had a long history being up there. This Breakaway Academy that they're talking about would basically be sort of a school component that would break off of that sort of initial Breakaway Hockey that's been in the community center for a number of years.
Okay.
So the design on the, and Mark and Jason, they can answer some questions on the ice portion and on the design portion. But as I mentioned, we, we actually started the capital improvement program and the council has been working with staff over the last couple of years on this. But we started that last summer when we did the pool HVAC system. That went very well. We also did the pool deck, showers and locker rooms. So there's some capital dollars that went into that, into the community center. And now the third part is, is the ice arena where the council authorized the work that's currently going on in the arena. The other projects, Matt has mentioned the vestibule area, so we're gonna be redoing the, the entry, the main entry into the community center and the entry into the ice arena. We'll be replacing the rubberized flooring that, when you come into Arena One and go into Arena Two, so that rubberized flooring will be replaced. We'll also be remodeling or renovating the restrooms in the Arena One, not Arena Two, but in Arena One. So that's one of them also. So the vestibules, the, the restrooms, and then part, there's, there's a large wall that's gonna be put up in Arena One. So that would be the, the third, the third addendum. The other project outside of the arena, as you remember, there was a number of capital projects that we wanted to do. And it was, it was across the whole community center, not just the ice arena. But the other one that we're, that we're meeting on is, is to replace the lights in the gymnasium with more energy efficient lights. And that would be approximately, and we're still negotiating, but that would be approximately a $7,000 cost. And that includes the $3,000 rebate. But that, we hope, or we know that that would be more energy efficient by putting in these new lights into the gymnasium. So with that, I can let, I'll let Jason, you guys know Jason and Mark, but Jason can answer any questions you might have as far as the ice project itself, mechanical part. And then Mark can go through some of the designs and colors. I should say that we did meet last week with the school district. I don't say council has some interest in us meeting with the school district, so we met with the school district, the youth hockey association, the figure skating club. So that, which Mark goes through tonight, that was what we went through with that group of vendors last week.
Did he come up with the design then or has he got?
He's gonna show it tonight.
Okay.
It's really good.
That was a big fight.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'll briefly give you an update on where we're at. The rink floor in rink two, the cement floor has been poured. It's been curing for three weeks now. I like to give it a four week cure before you start putting cooling on it. The mechanical room in Arena Two, new, we'll call it the engine room now. It's mainly had all the big heavy equipment in place and lots of piping that's been welded in there too. So that's on schedule. Rink two will, I should start, rink one will shut down June 21st. And then we're gonna melt the ice in there, move the boards over to rink two and start building the ice over there. It should reopen by June 7th. And June 8th is when our, or July 8th is when our summer camps start up. So we'll be without ice for about two weeks during that time. It's kind of a slow period anyway with the 4th of July and that one week, so.
Did you always have ice year round? I mean, did you have one open?
Always had one sheet. That's always been year round. So any questions on, on the mechanicals?
I don't know. I saw the video, the floor, I thought it was kinda cool.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive. They have about 30 guys there and they have to pour that floor from start to finish in one big board. Yeah. So at the end, I hope to have a time lapse of the whole project from us tearing the boards down to putting up the new boards and people skating on it.
It'd be good to see.
Yeah. With that, I'll introduce Mark Wenzel. He's been up already, but kinda show the design.
All right. Thanks, Jason.
We're turning that on the camera.
I don't know.
Where did you, where did you have that video that I would've saw that? Was it on Facebook or something?
It was on the city's YouTube page. So I can, I can email Matt.
Please do.
So let's move to some pieces. Um, so with all the work being done to fix the ice equipment, the mechanical equipment, better ventilation, all that, we thought it's appropriate time to give the arena a fresh new look. We're gonna be tearing a lot of stuff off the walls and putting new stuff up, so it will, there'll be some wounds and scabs to resolve too. So we've worked on a design for the community center that tries to speak to this sense of community that is so important here in Chaska and the diversity of users you have in that facility. So I'm gonna maybe try to get a couple, oh, I can't. Okay. So we came up with an idea of these sort of colorful banner-like stripes on the building to, I think your screens probably don't show this very well. This doesn't look real good here, but, and then we took silhouettes. And you see a hockey player here and a figure skater here and scattered those about the arena to sort of show what kind of activities go on inside. We did introduce the Chaska Hawks and CCHA colors, which is not showing up very well. We have the purple of their color, their primary color, purple. And we used a little bit of a toned down gold, which is this color here, to represent their colors. But we mixed it in with other things, so it wasn't a Hawks arena, but everybody's arena. And yet it's still celebrated one of the major users of the facility. We have the Chaska Hawk here placed right behind the bleachers. So I'll kind of go through this a bit to explain it to you. So this is the end wall where the scoreboard is. This is the scoreboard right here. So here's a hockey player right there with a few banners that sort of go either side of the scoreboard. Then this wall, if I can get it on there, is the long wall. There's the bleachers. This is where the home team mostly sits, so we put the Chaska Hawks with their logo just behind it. I'll slide this over a little bit. And you can see there's the CCHA name there and another hockey player associated with the CCHA. And then the end wall, as you walk in the arena, the one that would be to your left as you're sitting in the bleachers, we have the Chaska Figure Skating Club there and a figure skater. And then the wall that is directly above the curved glass wall of lobby, there's currently not a wall up there now. We're gonna extend that wall up. We think it's a major focus of the arena and we're gonna put the host, the city of Chaska Ice Arena up there because you're really hosting all the events and activities in the facility, so you have a prominent place. And then the last wall you see at the bottom here is the wall that you will look at as you are sitting in the, in the bleachers. And if you've been in the arena recently, you may remember those ugly silver ducks that come down and it's not very elegant down there right now. So we've cleaned all that up, patched up the walls and all that as part of this project. Another hockey player, as you're watching the games, more of the sort of banner-like stripes. And then this is the mezzanine currently today, right here, this spot. If you can see that. We're gonna enclose that and Breakaway Hockey's name goes on that because that's a space they're going to use again as maybe not one of the big four, but the next important user and they get their name stuck here. So we're trying to bring everybody that's part of the arena together and scatter their colors about. And we're also gonna do some work in the lobby. So as we come in the lobby, now this is gonna be a little hard for you to follow, I'm sure, but this is the door right here as you come in. This is the brick walls and this is the entrance to the restrooms. These are the glass doors that head down to the arena. So we're working on some plaques that will go there that will have interchangeable things to put up. So depending upon the users and what they would like to display, can be anywhere from something of an event, a hockey player, a team portrait or something like that, that'll go on some displays here. The rest of the lobby gets this banner-like stripes again. We brought in this brick orange color to match with the brick of the building and sort of tie the, the rest of the building to the ice arena. Then some simple, you know, names over the skate, sharpening and skate rental room and over the snack bar. We're gonna do some other things in there, new benches, as Tom mentioned, new flooring. So the whole place will have a crisp new look. The arena will be painted throughout and these graphics that I'm showing you are actually done with vinyl. They're adhered to the wall, so they are changeable and fixable if somebody happens to hurt one. They're a pretty durable way to do that installation and gives you a lot of flexibility of what you'd like to do.
Maybe you or Jason could talk about the video.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, miss. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So again, if you picture, this is the skate rental room. Right now, there's a bulletin board right here, a series of them. We're gonna replace that.
That's toward the front, I'm trying to get that.
I'm sorry.
I got everything else figured out.
That's facing west, so it's where the skate sharpening, the wall that's skate sharpening.
If you come in the lobby and you look forward, you'll see the snack bar ahead of you, to the left of you. There's the window for skate sharpening and skate rental. And then there's a wall, actually Ron's and Jason's offices are here, but that's what these doors represent. But it's a plain white wall right now with some bulletin boards on it. So that's gonna become a video bulletin board, which is what these screens represent. So again, the CCHA, the Hawks, they can put a scrolling message that they'd like to put up. They can put their team photos electronically up, whatever they would like to do. It'll be programming that, of course, the community center will do, but the users of the arena can participate.
Can multiple screens be one or individually?
They can be combined to do one message. They can do one message here, you know, one of these interactive things that's all computer programmed.
But it's a two-by-three video wall, correct?
Basically.
So there's six screens.
So you could, you could have-
Saying they could all come together if you want.
Yeah, you could have CCHA that has just sort of the messaging that they wanna have next to the high school, or you could have one larger message.
Yeah, I mean, you could take a team photo and run it across to all six and then scroll something else, divide it into pieces for each. Kinda infinite what you could do. So that's the kind of new look part of the project for the arena. That work will start in August and be complete by the opening of the arena in October.
So, so help me on these colors. That, what looks yellow there, that's the toned down gold? Is that the same as what's gonna be inside?
Right.
And then it's, is that green?
There's green. There's, this, probably I should use this one for the, let me use the arena one too. So we have a purple, just a light gray, a blue, and a light yellow, goldish color. Purple being the most used color, and then the rest kinda just do a balanced palette.
Is there significance with the green and the blue?
Well, I think the main reason is to make sure the arena has a variety of color versus becoming one color. Let's say all purple or all blue or all something. We wanna give it a variety of colors because there's a variety of activities, and it will seem to be, I think, a fresher look than if it's, people remember it as a purple arena, if you will.
Yeah, it was one of the things that, as we talked with the other user groups, so high school, CCHA, the figure skating club, is to make sure that it's not just an arena that's dominated by one user group, that it's a community arena. And so it was nice after the meeting that they had last week, I know Tom and myself got a really nice email from the CCHA about that they really appreciate the, how the arena was handled and the colors there, because it creates a community identity, but also recognizes that there's multiple user groups that are in there.
So that's not storm blue that's in there, is it?
No.
I don't know, to me, the colors, I don't care for. If, like I said, maybe that's not a good color, but the green just, yikes. I don't know, that's just, if you want me to be brutally honest, I don't.
Could you do a silhouette of the Chaska logo for the, for the City of Chaska Ice Arena?
You know, we've talked about the logo in a couple different ways. We did have it located on this wall, but we've talked now about this being a changeable display. So that may become worked into there. We also have talked about the logo being incorporated into the, sort of the Chaska banner right here that's over the main entrance. There is one logo now, as you come in, the front door overhead, there's the gold sign of the city logo there.
Is the camera picking up the true colors?
It's not. I should just pass see that.
It looks, it does not look very, I don't know. Sorry.
One thing that does get incorporated into that, and Jason's working on this, the actual caps of the boards are gonna be a purple color too.
That-
It's avocado green.
The purple, is that a purple thing? Is that supposed to be kinda shading the Hawk? Is that, is that the idea behind that?
Right, it's kind of a full color logo, it's a two-color logo, if you will, sort of purpleish gray and light gray.
The Hawks still will have a full color logo by center ice.
I guess the only, the only other thing that I see that I really didn't, it didn't make a lot of sense is you have that nice, that nice Hawk logo there, but as soon as there's people in there, it all disappears. I mean, if this is proportionate to the sizing of it, you would never really see that.
Yeah, it's the height you have left in the arena, the ceiling. It's kind of as big as we can make it without it being lost in the ceiling.
So the, okay, so you're gonna do the banner effect, are the rest of the walls then white?
Yes. And the banners are all put up high so the lower level can be repainted, because that's where it gets touched and handled. So we don't have to repaint the stripes, which are done, but that's why they're all up high. And that sort of gives it that, again, that sort of banner effect.
I'm sure that there was, I don't know, it just doesn't do anything to me. I don't know if you're looking for our approval, and I know you've had people looking at it, but it sure, I don't know.
You know, as I've looked at it, to me, the important thing in the process has been two things, is to make sure that the user groups are really behind what's going on, and that we create a look that really allows each of the user groups to feel like it's their facility. And that's one of the reasons that we went and talked specifically to each of those groups and brought them into that process, was to make sure that they were really bought into that. You know, my experience with colors in the past in different projects that we did is that it changes from one person to another to another as far as what people view as being good colors and, you know, not so good colors. But that was probably the main objective that we had as we went in there, is to make sure each of those user groups were.
Does, like, the figure skating, do they have their own colors?
That I don't know.
They have, like, a little blue.
So is the blue and the green CCHA or just non-purple, kind of?
The green comes out of that cool color palette we're going with. We tried a couple different options, you know, some with their bright, you know, yellow and the bright things, and it just, it got too busy and too kind of screaming at you.
Too busy, too busy like that? Be too busy like that? I don't know, I just, I'm not sure, but. I don't know what to say. I know there's been a lot of effort put into this, but I.
Not a fan of the stripes?
Uh-uh.
I guess one thing we were trying to do as well is, you walk into any other arena and they have that one horizontal stripe that goes all the way around the rink. And we were trying to be a little different and a little, you know, put it out there. People will remember when they come to this rink that they were at the Chaska Arena and what we had to offer them.
It's a huge space, so you kinda have to do moves that are pretty bold, you know, and to have an impact to it. So the large silhouettes, I mean, they're pretty much sixteen foot tall, and the stripes are big, because of the scale that you're working with, it kinda takes something to be noticed, because it is, you know, it's twenty-five thousand square foot room, so it's big.
I think that's an important point, though, that Jason made, was that, you know, one of the things that we would get comments on in the old arena is the red and blue stripe going around the arena, and that people didn't necessarily view that as real positive either.
I, no, I heard that as well, but I, and I certainly don't know the answer, but I like silhouettes, I think that, I think that looks sharp. And just, it just looks different to me that, I don't know.
Is there a real issue with the, you know, the couple other groups of just going, you know, you know where my heart's gonna lie, is with the purple and the gold. But I mean, is there a real issue, I mean, if we went just purple and gold?
I'll let Mark talk to you about the gold. For the purple, you know, we'll have that full color Hawk logo at center ice. We'll have the Chaska Hawks across the players' benches as well with a Hawk logo there, and then there's a couple Hawk logos on the scoreboard. Matt briefly mentioned this too, the cap rail, which right now is blue color, and that's what separates the boards from the glass. It's what the glass sits on, that's gonna be hot purple as well. So there'll be a big showing of the purple along with the vertical stripes as well.
I mean, I like the idea of tie, I'm just, I just don't care for the choices. I can see where we don't wanna go all purple and gold, I get that. That green and the blue just doesn't do anything to me. Colors are individual choices, I get that.
You know, that, you know, I can tell you, growing up in a community where the community center had just the high school colors that were in there, the feeling from other user groups is they felt left out. They, in La Sura, it was the Bulldogs, and the whole arena was painted as Bulldogs, and it really sort of made outsiders of the groups that were coming in, like the figure skating groups and the younger hockey groups. So that's one of the, and that's not a unique experience to La Sura. That's an experience, I know Jeff and I were talking about that up in Maple Grove with, where he went to school, that you can tend to exclude different groups who end up being, quite frankly, larger user groups for us than even the high school, by not trying to incorporate more colors into. And that's really what we were trying to accomplish, is tilt the hat towards the fact that this is Chaska Hawks home ice, but not have it be exclusive to that.
Some of the user groups we have, like, excuse me, the figure skating, you know, yes, CCHA and the Chaska Hawks, they come from Chaska or District 112. The figure skaters come as far as Mound, Waconia, Shocker Peak. And, you know, our summer users of turf, you know, the Minnesota youth docks across from the swarm, they come out and play and love our facility. And this is just another thing that kinda gets them, it might not be their colors exactly, but it makes it feel like it's more of a community rink where they can come in and see that. So we pull a lot of different people. Breakaway Hockey pulls a lot of players from Wayzata and Minnetonka. So it's a community rink, and we bring a lot of different people into it, so.
I mean, and, and I wouldn't go with what Jay's thought is, just because, I mean, we've been there before where the school walked away on us, and I remember that, and so there is that, and I get that about the community arena. I totally, I, that just doesn't do nothing to me, I'm sorry. I mean, maybe more of some of the other colors than whatever, but like I say, that's what, I don't know where the colors came from, but probably somebody way smarter than me came up with them, but if you're asking for my opinion, I don't like them. So, I don't know, that's my two cents.
Well, we could certainly go back and talk about that. I mean, what I'm hearing is that the whole idea of having the banners and the logo and, for the most part, the community feel to it is a good direction to go, but color selection is maybe not wild about that.
I'm, that's just me, I don't know what these guys are thinking, but.
If I could, Matt? Staff has some reservations in relation to the green, so we can go back in relation to the green and come up with a different color. I think with the gold, we did go up to the Chaska High School and looked at the main gym and the auxiliary gyms. The person that was at the meeting representing the school, the gold stripe that they had in one of the auxiliary gyms, they painted over it. And if you look in the main gym, they don't have a lot of gold, they have a lot of purple. And I think it was the same reason that Mark was trying to reflect in this drawing, is if you put the gold as it is in the Hawks logo, it becomes very dominant, and it doesn't give you that look that we're trying to capture in the arena. So that's why we went to the purple. We do have the Hawk at center ice, we've got the Chaska Hawk image, the Chaska Hawk wording in front of the players' benches. We have two Chaska Hawks on each side of the blue line. We have two Hawks on the scoreboard. We actually probably have more Hawks in the arena than they have in the high school gym, so we do reflect the Hawk look. And once again, we're trying to be sensitive to the arena being something that serves community. If you look back to when the community center was built in 1990, I think, and I always preach this fact, is it's truly that we serve community as a whole and we don't focus on a particular group. We went, Jason and I and Kathy over to Eagan, they had a hockey school over there, and it was very dominant. You could tell it was just, it was a hockey facility. And our ice arena serves a lot of different groups, figure skating clubs, skating lessons, lacrosse, soccer, so on and so forth. So we're trying to be sensitive to that. But we can go back and take a look at that green and see if we can't come up with something that's other than green. We can do that.
I mean, I, like I said, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, if I have to vote in favor of this, I can't. I just, and I don't know if it's the orange that jumps in there that makes this one look different.
Yeah, it's busy.
It looks like the seventy wallpaper look. And I don't know, maybe that's the look we're looking for, but I don't know, I'm sorry, guys.
Well, let us, let us take that back. I mean, I, you know, again, I think what we're hearing is that, you know, the general looks, the silhouettes, and what we're trying to accomplish, it's me looking at some of it.
You know, I don't go to a lot of hockey arenas, I mean, that's, I'll say, that's probably the only one I can do. I get the red stripe that kinda got old, and this is that it's vinyl and it's changeable, and, but I just, I just, sorry.
No, we can take those comments and then take a look at it again.
Not very good comments.
Plus, that yellow is a bit too pale. Was that the intent, or can we, can we make it a bit more bright rather than being?
It just doesn't look cheery to me.
We had a drawing at the beginning, so we had probably three concepts, and we had one with the bright colors, and I think the word was cartoonish. I mean, you can go to the bright, to the pops, and it was very, it wasn't any of the quality that you see in the Chaska Community Center. When you walk in the community center, you see the brick and you see the block, you see a quality look. So to go down in the arena and to jump out with the golds and the bright colors, it just, the word I heard was cartoonish. So that was one of the first.
I could see that, 'cause that gold and you get a dark purple, they're pretty, they're pretty overwhelming, but those other ones really are taken away.
I do applaud the effort to let, to make the others feel welcome, because it does serve multiple parties and multiple groups, obviously, so I understand that.
We'll have another color meeting.
If you haven't figured out what are the worst parts of the whole project, is talking about color.
We went through that, and we have that green in our building, and we have a green similar to that in the buildings we built, and everybody comments about it just, and maybe that's what jumps at me as much as anything is that particular kind of, I can't say the real color.
Hour and a half council discussion with Councilmember Doctor up here discussing roof color. Remember that?
It was almost two hours long just discussing, so it's not that common, so.
Is it too late to rewrite the Ward One description to add colorblind might be an issue?
No, that's, we could certainly look at that. And, you know, again, I think as part of that, we're gonna make sure that we incorporate those groups into discussions that they really buy off them too, because, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, the whole intent here is, you know, especially, these are gonna be like brand new ice rinks. And so, you know, because the other part we didn't talk about is Arena One's got new boards. And so, you know, when people go in there, other than the fact that there's not gonna be new, you know, wall structure that's put up, this is a brand new ice rink. So, you know, we want this to be something that stands out that people look at and say, that's, you know, continues to be a really quality facility, so.
Well, that's why I wondered if some of these colors were for the different organizations, but they're really just a non-purple color to make it more all encompassing, correct?
And that's really true. I mean, the yellow is sort of the Chaska brick color, and the blue is kind of, you know, the skating and Breakaway Blue and red in there and things, so it kinda brings in, without bringing in the red. So purple becomes a dominant color. It's, you know, color, sort of color theory to make these things work is pretty complex, and if we, if we take out the green, you could end up with a scheme that's mostly cold. We don't want it cold. We want it to not be rainbow scheme, but, so, these things would take a little bit of balance, and that's all we're trying to do, is kind of give it some balance to it. But you gotta have purple be the prominent, the dominant color, the strongest color.
I'm glad I didn't wear my green shirt. You're kind of right, you're as neutral as you can be.
If you have a green shirt that color, you shouldn't probably wear it anymore, ever. Yeah, but that's even, that's even more, that's cheerier than that.
That's Easter egg green. It's not avocado green from the seventies.
Did we have to, I mean, was it our job to?
It was more of an informational, I agree with, so, yeah, don't worry about that.
You know, when I was a kid, the refrigerator in our house was- You know, when I was a kid, the refrigerator in our house was at avocado green, so it's very familiar.
What there is in action, I know, is the lease.
Okay.
Well, that's the easy part, yeah. Don't put colors in front of us.
It's a great partnership we have with, uh, with St. Francis. So, are we looking for, uh, action on the lease, I assume?
Yes.
Is that eight?
Mr. Mayor, are you ready, or do you want to summarize?
I mean, uh, you know, no, I, I just, I think a 15-year, uh, lease like that is really good, because it really says, and, you know, the, it says a lot, but the ability that, you know, they're going to do the remodel, I think is just, I, I think we're, we're all in a win-win situation. It's a great location, there's a lot of activity there.
Absolutely.
So.
As, as we sort of looked at, we couldn't have thought of a better, uh, outcome of discussions than what we're coming up with.
And using the same contractor, great idea.
Okay. So, if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion, Bow, second row, there we go.
Very good.
To approve the lease of St. Francis Regional Park. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, but before we go, we want to know how you really feel about the colors.
He hedges too much, isn't he?
Well, I just couldn't let that go out in the open someday and say that I had a hand in that.
That's right.
All right, moves us into 8A. Um, and Matt, I'm gonna let you introduce it, because I just have trail here. I haven't had a chance to go over that, but I know what it is.
Uh, basically, the item in front of you tonight is actually in relation to a grant that the county received, uh, two years ago, that actually gets funded this year from the state, uh, which allows us to make that final gap between where our trail ends at Inglor and Audubon, and where it starts on the LRT trail up on the old rail bed. Uh, so the, the dollars are there, they've actually negotiated the purchase for the property, uh, private property that needs to go over. The intent is to, uh, construct that yet this year as part of the original grant. Uh, we had some city dollars that were going into it, it was about $40,000. Uh, you'll see, actually, I believe that's going to be at the next meeting, is, is the joint powers agreement that we have between us and the county to, uh, formalize that. Uh, but one piece that they need to finalize things with the state is to have, uh, not only acquired the property, private property that they need for the trail, but, uh, there's a small portion of it that actually goes over, uh, city property, and they need to have official permission from the city to, to be able to go over that. So, this would be, uh, official action from the city council to say that we're okay with that trail section going over our property.
How do we own just that little parcel? What is that?
Well, we don't own just that little parcel, there's that whole square, uh, that we own, and Neil just sort of pointed out here. This was actually, uh.
Because isn't that, does, does Degler actually own some of that? I know he farms it, but.
So, it's this square that we own?
Yeah, but that's not very big.
No, it actually has to do, uh, I believe, with some wetlands, uh, that are back here, uh, back in this area. Uh, the corner piece comes up right, uh, over to the road. I don't know the exact history of how we owned it, but this is one that the city owns.
So, explain it to people at home, that that is actually 212 there.
This is old 212.
61, sorry.
61, Flying Cove Drive, uh, where it makes that corner, sort of right in front of Gedney, uh, Pickle. Uh, Inglor Boulevard intersects with it here, and over here is Audubon. And so, basically, right now, we have.
And then show them where that rail bed is, where the trail.
This is the, the, uh, old rail bed, uh, that, uh, right now is the LRT trail that goes to the east through Eden Prairie and up to Hopkins. Uh, so basically, our trail section, there's a parking lot that's on the west side of Audubon Road, so basically right over here, uh, that the trail then goes down and actually ends, uh, right at the end of, uh, Inglor Boulevard. This would fill in that gap up to, uh, up to the LRT trail. So, basically, what it does is it connects our entire trail system with the LRT system. Uh, so people will have the option of being able to park at this parking lot and get on the LRT system and not have to go on the road, uh, or people can come into the community and connect to any one of our, uh, trail systems as they come in. Uh, as part of the project, this is a section that's not constructed yet, so that's where the grant came in. Uh, some of the city, uh, dollars towards this do go towards, uh, basically reconditioning, uh, this trail section that's in here now, so that it matches up not only with this new section we're constructing, uh, but it's one that hasn't received a lot of maintenance over the years, because it's not used very much, and so, uh, match up with the rest of our, our trail system.
Will that be?
Yes. It's bituminous up until the point that it hits the LRT system, and then it's a crushed rock aggregate.
So, Matt, I have had people asking me when that's coming, because they've heard news, so you said this summer it'll be?
That's the intent, is, is, uh, probably sometime in the later part of the summer is when they'd actually construct it. Um, it is a, a county project that we would contribute towards, so, uh, they'd be the lead in the project.
Okay.
I just know that that's been a major, talked about link for a long time, and really makes a lar, a huge connection, without going on on 61.
Yep. The other one that's out there, too, that, uh, the county's trying to utilize the same program, and they'll be talking with us in the city of Carver, is, uh, blacktopping the connection down the other side of the community, between Carver and Chaska, uh, with blacktop, so that you could come from downtown Carver, uh, come into Chaska, hook onto our regional system around the levee, and then get to the rest of our trails in town. Or be able to continue on with the connection on, uh, the LRT system.
All right, I think this is one that's pretty straightforward, all we're just is really approving to have it done, which we've wanted anyways, so.
I move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Row.
I will second that.
Second by Councilmember Bow. To, uh, what am I, what am I calling this, just to?
It's, uh, basically the, uh, approval limited use permit for the use of our property.
Approval limited use permit, what he said. All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Moves this into the other amended item, which is appointing an acting, uh, acting mayor for the calendar year of 2013 with the, uh, unfortunate move of Councilmember Millard.
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight, it's one that we have to take action on by statute, uh, the first meeting of each year. Uh, so whether it's the same person that's serving that role, like we saw for a number of years, Councilmember Lindahl was, uh, in the role of, uh, the, uh, acting mayor, but we have to take action on it every year, and you have to take action on it if the person who's serving in that role, uh, is no longer on the council. So, this would be to, uh, uh, serve out the remainder of 2013. The policy, uh, that was adopted a few years back, it was about four or five years back.
Oh, it wasn't even that long.
Oh, two years ago, I guess it was, because it was when Councilmember Millard came on. Uh, basically said that, uh, there'd be a rotating, uh, uh, mayor pro temp, and that it would be based on, uh, seniority first, uh, and then go, uh, that somebody should have, uh, a couple of years of experience on the council. Uh, that was specifically for, uh, if somebody came on new and wasn't really sort of familiar, was sort of the, the protocol for the, the meetings. And that, uh, if you ever had a situation where, uh, two wards had the same experience, uh, that the ward that had not had the mayor pro temp for the longest time period would be the, the one that would, uh, get the, uh, the nod in that situation. Uh, given that, uh, if going by the policy, the next one in line then would be Councilmember Row, uh, with two years of experience, the, uh, and, uh, it was Councilmember Schultz, then Councilmember Bow, Councilmember Millard, and so, uh, Councilmember Row would be next in line based on the policy.
Matt, because of his previous experience, that eliminates the two-year experience.
Yep.
Matt, how would we do that? I know in the past, we've always made that decision at the first of the year.
Yep.
So, in a case like this, we would appoint someone for six months to get us to that point.
Yep.
And then at that point, do we decide if we want to do that same person for a full year? Because otherwise, he would only have six months.
Yep. I mean, keep in mind that this is just a policy.
Yeah.
It was basically to create some.
Some guidelines.
Some guidelines, uh, for how to move on it, but absolutely, the council would have its discretion to say, we don't want to use a policy at all.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, yeah, absolutely, the council would, uh, has to make the appointment at the beginning of the year, but could choose to, to do exactly that.
Okay. So, at this point, if we would just be appointed to get us to the end of the year, in which case, the statute requires that we do at that. Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
So, basically, I am looking for, uh, motion, second, and being that you, I, we would.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bow and I would probably have to do that, is that correct?
Can he second himself being appointed, or?
With only the three of us here, I think I have to second it.
You can second motions, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know that, but I mean, he, I don't think legally can, can he?
I think he probably could.
And this one, I mean, there's really no.
There's no financial benefit or anything?
Nothing, but.
Yep.
To make it, just cleaner, I'll just second it. So, I have a motion by Councilmember Bow to appoint, uh, Councilmember Row as the mayor pro temp for the remainder of the year 2013, and, uh, I will second that to make it a little easier on everybody. Very good. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Why'd that take, take you long, six months? You're already pro temp. All right, moves us into bills. Uh, Mr. Bow.
Hmm, Matt, uh, I had just a couple of questions. Uh, page two, second from the top. I was just curious, GPS lease, is that for the, for the town course?
Yes. That's for, we basically, instead of owning those systems, we lease them.
Okay.
And it's a, uh, monthly lease to do that.
Okay, which makes sense, because then you get upgrades and they're not our financial responsibility.
Yeah, the last time around, we did own them, and, uh, we wish we would have leased them.
Okay, okay.
Well, that pretty much answers that question.
It does, absolutely. And then on page three, second from the bottom, uh, who, who was living the good life?
Uh, that's actually one of our.
Probably a tour.
Yes, okay.
Our tours through the lodge.
Oh, okay, oh, perfect.
So, basically, uh, we coordinate it, uh, we collect the dollars, and then we, we take the people out on that.
Was that for this year already, or?
Uh, yeah, it was, I can't remember exactly.
Could have been cold, I'll bet, maybe, huh?
Yeah, they've been doing the cruises for a while, though.
Okay. And speaking of, oh, never mind, I'll save that for later, so, I, I've got a question related to that, but that'll go under other business.
Yep.
Uh, and that's really all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Row?
I have nothing.
I just got a couple. Page four, uh, Christopher Boils, this is t-shirt for clients. I just, that was rather strange. I don't, do I know, I don't know this guy.
Uh, well, it's through our community center, so I imagine that's t-shirts for an actual program. Uh, it could also be for one of our, uh, we have different part-time programmers that will actually do classes, and so a lot of times, they'll have t-shirt, t-shirts associated with those programs.
I've never seen the name, and it just kind of stuck me.
But that is for the community center.
Good question. Page six, uh, dot com printing, fourth up from the bottom, token bags? What, is that for, like, maybe touch truck or something?
No, that's token bags for the, uh, golf course.
Oh, drive, driving range, oh, okay.
So, there's, you get, there's bags that you get tokens to be able to go outside driving range to use it.
Oh, okay. Let me tell you about one other one.
So, while you're looking for that, i- is it the bag to hold the balls that you purchased with a token? Because you, you don't get a, like, a handful of tokens, do you, to put in a bag, or, or what is that?
No, you get a basket.
Use the driving range.
I don't know, the bag is just a little, just like a.
I wonder if, when they say tok, I mean, I was reading it a different way, thinking, because I know when you rent clubs, a lot of places will give you a, a token bag with the logo on it, with, with several.
Oh.
Chaska logo ball. I mean, I don't know if Chaska does this, but it just seems like an awful lot of money.
Because I thought that, at the driving range, machines out there, don't you get your token right there for the balls?
Yeah, then you gotta put them in a bucket.
Then you get the wire basket?
Yeah.
I can check, I can check that for sure.
Kind of weird.
But I know that's the golf course, so.
My thought it might be the rental, because I know with rental clubs, you do get those in courses.
The little bag I got my tokens in, is a little cloth bag, I mean, you'd get $10,000 for this.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah. No, I'll check into that.
All right. And then the last one I have is just, page 13, the top one, property upkeep service, what would that be for? I should probably look at these codes, and then they'll maybe tell me.
I'm sorry, which one?
Page 13, the very top one.
For closed property upkeep, or?
No, um.
You can check on it.
Yeah, I'll check on that one.
Rather than you making up something that's probably not true anyway, just check on it.
We gotta keep that, that's gonna do me stump him, so.
Well, we've had, we've had that conversation, I only know ahead of time. I look for ones I can fool around. So far, I'm doing good.
This time you are. All right.
I won't, I won't put you on the slide anymore.
All right. No, I'll check into it, I'll get back to you.
Okay, then, uh, with that, I would, uh, again, uh, any further comments? If not, uh.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the bills or pay the bills.
Motion by Councilmember Bow.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Row to pay the bills. Further discussion? Jeff?
Member Bow?
Yes.
Councilmember Row?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell?
Yes. Moves us into other business. Uh, Mr. Row?
Uh, a couple things. Did we get any new response back on the potholes at Chaska Commons?
Uh, not yet, uh, but.
They're unbelievable.
I've gotten more comments, certainly.
Yeah, yeah. And I know we probably don't have a lot of control there, but, um, it's, there's some that are four or five feet.
Oh.
Yeah, they're.
Sponsored by Bob's Body Shop.
And then, uh, just a note, I was out at the town course, uh, yesterday, and they said they, I think, had the most rounds in, on Sunday than they've had all year, you know, with the weather, so, uh, it's good to hear, so, um.
Well, when the weather's been good, it's been incredibly busy.
Yes.
But that just hasn't been real consistent.
We're talking rain the next two days, three days, yeah.
Probably an inch or so in the next couple of days, yeah.
Brutal. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Bow?
You bet. I just had one, um, and it relates back to discussion we had with the lodge and Al and Almas, and wondering if, uh, is let's go fishing up and running for the year, I assume, already?
They, uh, have not taken their first cruise yet.
Okay.
They have them all, uh, registered. They actually, Kathy was saying that they already have more cruises lined up now than they did at this time last year.
Really?
And they still haven't heard back from some of the people who are traditional ones, so.
Okay.
Um, that continues to get a lot of usage.
Fantastic.
That's great.
What percent would you guess, uh, is Chaska versus surrounding communities that don't have their own let's go fishing program? I'm just curious.
I'd say probably about 65% are Chaska, and, and the other 35% are, are non-residents.
Okay.
Because we are getting nursing homes from, you know, places like Waconia.
Sure.
Bell Plain, uh, so, around the area. The other part of it is that probably 10%, uh, maybe a little higher, of the rides, that they've sort of gone to this multi-generational type of rides.
Oh, yes.
Where the seniors will actually take out, uh, kids, especially through Club Extreme, which is the summer, uh, day camp that we have up at the community center during the weekdays, uh, so they'll take them out on that, uh, or, uh, different groups of kids that may not have an opportunity to get out and fish.
And I gotta admit, I really like that intergen, intergenerational approach, because I think both sides benefit, so.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I got a few things. Uh, you're gonna check on that, uh, thing I talked about on Locust Street about the, the, the sodding issue?
Spruce Street, yep.
First in Locust.
I, I believe, the, this is a common area down in Third Street and Third Street West and Spruce Street.
Spruce Street.
Where seed didn't come in. The solution, I believe, is that we're putting sod in there, I just don't think it's put down. Uh, we, we always try to seed the area, uh, first, because it takes better, uh, over a longer period of time, but with the dry
And I actually drove down there Sunday, and it's actually looking better than I had anticipated. I drove through their last fall, I know it didn't look very good. And I think it, I think, uh, Mr. Schmidt's other comment was, was there's some dead trees there, and I'm sure, and I know that those are to be taken care of, and this hasn't been a good year for getting those things taken care of, but it's just as long as they're still on the, on the, uh...
Yeah, because I know they met with another resident down there last week about that.
Okay, all right.
It's been a great year for grass seed, though, I tell you.
Yeah.
My, my yard, the spots I've seeded, well, oh boy.
Um, the other thing, I got a phone call on the thing that, uh, Councilmember Millard brought up at the last meeting about the, about the sober house, about there's restrictions and whatever. Now, this person believes that there's more people staying there in our bedrooms. Now, I, I know that our, our control is pretty limited there, but does that have?
The state statute says that, uh, a house can have up to six unrelated people staying in there. If they don't, they actually have to have a license through the state to actually be able to, to have more than six unrelated people in a facility, and that's typically related to some type of, uh...
So if it's a three-bedroom house, they can be shared in a bedroom, then, actually?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I believe that, I have to re-listen to that message.
Yeah, no, it's, it's six unrelated people can be in one house at, at a time.
Okay. All right, well, I, I may need your assistance on this one.
Yep, just let me know the address, and, you know, on the, the last one that popped up, you know, we were quick communication.
It's, it's the same one.
Same one, okay.
It's the same place on, on neighborhood, what, is that one to the left, Alpha 41? Yourself? Neighborhood one?
No, it's not Neighborhood one.
I'm trying to, it's three or four there.
It's three.
Three to the left.
I think it's three.
It's in there.
Okay. I'll talk to you, we'll get the address.
Okay. Um, and then, didn't we talk about here that, at our last meeting, and I don't remember if that was after, about Brian Jung getting a superintendent job?
Probably not, because that happened after.
That's what I thought.
Um, I, you want to say?
Well, no, go ahead. I, I just think that it's, uh, a big position in the city, and I think it's, uh, I think it was a good appointment, and I think it's important that we share.
Yeah, so, uh, obviously, we had our public works superintendent position open with Tim Weeby moving into the fire chief position. Uh, we did go through, uh, a full process and had some really good candidates come in from other communities, and, and by far, Brian really stood out, uh, which, um, is great from the perspective that it really, uh, it's really hats off both to Brian, but also to Tim, too, for spending a lot of time thinking about succession planning and, and how do we prepare people within our organization for that, and, uh, Brian's a pretty unique individual for a public works department, because most public works departments are pretty segregated between their parks and their streets. And, uh, Brian's sort of a, a unique person in that he has a lot of expertise in both, and, uh, that really brings both a lot of knowledge, but, uh, he also brings a lot of leadership to the table, and I think is gonna do a wonderful job.
Great.
Yep, thank you. Uh, something I got that, that I heard about last night that I thought was a little disappointing, um, the high school team was playing down at Athletic Park. Cubs were supposed to have practice, so they went up, because of playoffs, so they went up to use the field at the school, and we got billed for it, Cubs did. So, community ed, though...
All from, all from this.
Community ed, I, I just, it's just one of them that really bugs me. It's supposedly being taken care of, but somebody said it was already paid, and it wasn't a lot of money, I guess it was just the principle of the whole thing that kind of, but just if that ever crosses your path. They did talk to Troy Stein and Troy...
With that being said, we actually, today, myself and, and Tom and Kathy went up and had a discussion with the school district, sort of trying to get back to sort of the original model of, uh, where a resident doesn't really know the difference between a school or a city facility, both from a maintenance side, but also a programming side. Um, that was really sort of the original model that was out there, and I think really could serve our residents real well, and so we've really sort of started the discussions around that to see, is there a way that we can, uh, you know, try to, to model something around sort of that original concept of, of, you know, having, uh, you know, uh, you know, fields that are similarly maintained, similar, you know, similar from a booking perspective. It, it's just, it becomes really complicated, because, you know, the average resident doesn't really know that, you know, one school is a school district field, and one school, or one field is a city field. Uh, so, uh, you know, we, we started those discussions today, and that's, that's one of the things that we'd really like to try to, to move along.
But it was real clear to the school said that, you know, community ed does that, it's not our, about the booking of the field, but I, I just thought that that was almost so bad that I had a laugh at it at first, but I just thought it was something. Uh, speaking of Athletic Park, on, I'm not plugging anybody, with CCO, count four, is doing a thing about the best hometown ballpark, that Matt Brinkman, I think, is doing that, and there's voting, so we need people to get on CBS Local, I think is the website, and you can go in there, and they've actually listed a lot of ballparks, there's about 15 of them. And right now, our neighbor, Jordan's winning in Lee, so, um, I don't know how often you can vote, I think you can vote probably once a day, if the way I was.
I'll talk to, uh, Amy about that, because we went through that with the preservation alliance.
Yes, we need to get that out. I just saw it today.
We did, we did Facebook things, we did Twitter, all kinds of stuff, we can...
I put something out today at Facebook where I first saw it. I've heard about it, but I didn't know what was, how it was going on, I just saw it today, so.
We need to mobilize.
Yeah, definitely get ahold of, uh, like Troy Stein, have them tweet out from the high school, get, get the kids.
We need to get, we just need to get after that.
They have a pretty big network of, uh...
That Troy Stein through the school would be a good avenue there, so.
That's good enough.
So, and I think that will air Thursday night, I don't know when they shut it off, so we don't have many days of doing that, but, why, it's gonna rain for the next two days, people can sit under the computer and vote.
That's right.
Um, you're seeing a lot of things about Say Hey 5K all around town, a lot of different signs, they got signage everywhere, they got a lot of things going on. Uh, I think that I'd like to invite them maybe to come to the next meeting and talk about some of the things.
Absolutely.
Um, and have, and just talk about, it is amazing how much stuff they got in there, and, uh...
They're actually looking at trying to do some type of a concert down in Athletic Park as part of the, the weekend event, and we're actually meeting on that tomorrow. Uh, it really could be sort of a, a neat event, so...
Are they thinking Friday night or Saturday night?
Uh, actually...
I thought Saturday night.
I think it's Saturday night. It's after the...
So it'd be after, after the, the 5K.
Sounds like fun, yeah.
So, uh, but I just, people are wondering, there's, there's a lot of different events, there's gonna be a mascot race on Friday night, which it is what it is, a mascot, I don't even know where it's gonna be, quite, uh, do you know?
Somewhere right around here, because it's, it's...
Yeah, they don't go very...
It's a kids' race, too, because I know they get capes and stuff.
That's right. So, so it's that Friday night, Saturday morning, that is the Say Hey 5K, and there's, actually, Friday night, then there's also, I think there's a dinner.
Spaghetti dinner.
Spaghetti dinner, load up with carbs, then the next day, after you run, then there's a little luncheon, and they, you know, there's a band gonna be in the, in the, in the plaza, and so it's, uh, they put a lot of time and effort into that, so if people see, there's getting, they've got a lot of signs up already, and I know that there are more coming, so...
They actually have a Southwest Transit bus wrapped, too.
Yes. It's not, I don't think it's quite done yet, I haven't seen them...
No, I saw it the other day.
It is on the road already, okay.
It's on the road.
So, um, a lot of time and effort those guys put into that, so. And then lastly, uh, Matt and I and Jeff all attended the groundbreaking of the Legends?
Yep, Legends, I guess.
Keep getting the Legends and the Landings crossed, but, um, interesting, uh, we saw some virtual tours of the facility, it really looks like it's gonna be a really, really neat, uh, facility, so, um, I think they're gearing up, and what do they say, in the end of May, they thought by the time they get mobilized and...
End of June.
I mean, end of June, yeah, yeah. End of June, so...
Yeah, they'll be coming back, the meeting on the 17th for final approval, and, uh...
And our tree?
Yeah, the tree. And they, they'd really like to be, uh, breaking ground right after that, because they're going through finalizing their financing next week.
That's all I got. Jeff, you got it?
Um, as Matt had put in the, um, bulletin, or the bi-weekly, I'm sorry, Via West has purchased the old Integris building, and not, not is it a positive for the city, um, per what Matt said, is, you know, just, the positives data center bring in terms of infrastructure, revenue, et cetera, but also it, it fills up the Integris building, which had a considerable amount of industrial and office space, and hopefully creates more of a demand for, you know, another building to be filled up here, or a newer building, um, in the near future, so that's good news on many fronts. The other thing is I went to a, um, grand opening today for South Lake Pediatricians. Um, they're based out of Minnetonka, uh, they've been around for 40 years, they're in the 212 Medical Center now, and they're really happy to be here in Chaska, so...
Haven't they been there?
They've been here for a couple of months, though, this is the first.
Oh, I was thinking they were here in the original build. Huh.
Maybe they expanded, uh, they, they added some rooms.
I was thinking that, but I know there's a bunch, there's a lot of clinics out there, so.
Yeah.
Maybe I was the wrong one. Now, what did you say in the beginning, you, you, on the Integris building, it wasn't good for the city? Is that what you said?
No. No, in addition to, you know, the fact that it's a data center, um, you know, we see the, the added infrastructure that the, it, those types of uses bring to the city, the, the tax revenue, um, the electric revenue that comes in, and there's also some employment numbers involved there, but in addition to that, it fills up vacant space that creates more demand on the market.
I thought you were saying...
More benefit than just the...
I heard that, too.
Oh, sorry.
I thought you were gonna start saying, "Well, there's not a lot, large demand for headcount at those facilities."
It's all good news, it's all good.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that Jeff brings up that's actually a really good point is, you know, anytime you're coming out of an economic cycle like this, uh, from a new building perspective, you'd never see new general industrial buildings going up until the other ones fill.
Yep.
Because the, you know, the, uh, those buildings that sit there for a long time